This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order of the work session at 6:30 PM on June 6, 2023. 6:30. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Counselor Wagner. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Norman. I'll call the roll. Counselor Wagner?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Mary votes aye. Discussion, police chief contract.
Okay, so I know there was a little... It was difficult what we had to... What the prior police chief contracts contracted us to do. So, I... This is the original agreement, just redacted. It's the one that says employment agreement at the top. So it just has personal information and salaries redacted because they don't... That doesn't mean anything to us right now. This one that I agree... Included for you is what Greg sent from Clotzkini. Clotzkini, as we all know, is under the sheriff now, but this was the most recent one that they had done, a police chief contract or an employment contract. So the... I wanted to discuss with you guys, one, what would you want in an agreement? Two, do you want an agreement? So the city of Scapus, the city of St. Helens, and Columbia City do not have a police chief separate agreement. Those employees are employees like everyone else under the handbook. So that's kind of the first order of operations is, do we think we could attract or keep someone that's already attractive without an agreement? And if you're going the agreement route, what do you want to safeguard or present as your first draft to a potential employee of what isn't in the agreement? Does that make sense? The agreement's got to give some give and take. I believe you all felt like the give and take was too much of a take on the city's behalf, but in all honesty, ours was kind of the lesser of what I've seen out there as far as what someone gets if you let them go or...
So you're saying without a separate chief agreement, they would just fall under the regular officer agreement?
They would just fall under as employees, as all the employees of the city do. So they follow the handbook. So, and with the handbook, I was trying to pull it up, but I couldn't. They printed half of it for me, which was really helpful. So, pull up. So in the state of Oregon, employees are out, but you know, just say, "I no longer need you. Thank you. Goodbye." So that's one part of it. Let me see. So in the termination clauses in the original, that was written by Jim Johnson. That's Jim Johnson. Bill Hackenstein won a year previous, and then the council had got rid of him. So then Jim Johnson was the signature on this, someone I presented you with. I mean, you can see there what they get in termination.
Which in this part is the... You give is to bump back down to sergeant?
Well, so that's the reason we paid out in this circumstance is we knew that person wasn't... Couldn't... We could let them bump back down to sergeant. We'd still be in the same boat. They'd still be unable to perform the duties because of medical. So we were advised... We were advised by the insurance company and legal to go the route because they said you'll end up in a fight the other way. If you bring him back in and then you still do this, then you're in a fight.
Josette?
Yeah.
Looking back at the last 11 years or so when this was written, signed, how did it... How did the contract generally work both ways until the last person went on a workman's comp claim and off work? How was it working? Pretty well?
Yeah, so they still fall under the handbook. They just have extra safeguards in this agreement, right? So there was nothing in the agreement that made it difficult in the relationship between myself and that person. They were still following all the same roles as an employee. I think there's kind of... I've sat in here, guys, in shoes before, and when you sit on that side of it, you're like, no severance. No, you don't want to give anything. But then you ultimately don't attract anything at the same time. So, you know, we could propose that we amend this one or have Ruben amend it and clean it up for regulations and address whatever your guys' concerns are. Really, it's most of them... And I know that one time they did use the going back into the sergeant's position, back into the union. He did during the whole officer K tribulation. Because he felt like, hey, nothing's safe here. And took that opportunity, go back out of the union so that should the city have just wiped the slate clean, he would have been protected. The union wouldn't have let the city at the time just kind of disband the police department and do something different. So I think while it's kind of not a good thing for us that someone can step back into the sergeant's position, I don't know that if you're offering an employment agreement without that right to go back into the union, they feel pretty exposed and they might not even sign an agreement. I'm not talking about any person. I'm talking about when you say we open it up to the public and we get someone that wants to be chief and don't internally post first, then I think they'd be really suspect of an agreement that wouldn't let them get back to the union. It's really up to you guys with which way you want to go, and then we'll go that way.
There might be a reason they would choose to go back into the union not for something like an officer K issue. I mean, another person shows up and they go, "That guy would be real..." Or girl would be really better at this, and I'm happy being a sergeant or an officer, whatever. I mean, that... I like having that in there, that option for them to be able to do.
It does... It does just confuse things a little bit, like it did with us, where someone's having a medical issue. Yeah, you let them go back into sergeant's position. Then you're still kind of holding on to this person that can't perform. So you could add language, maybe strengthen language, should this employee be unable or... If that's language, Ruben could draft some.
Yeah. I agree that that would be... If Ruben has something he can add to protect us in that way, it'd be really helpful, but I don't have a problem with it being in there. That aside, I also... And I obviously, I don't think anyone... I expect that no one's here to say we want no severance. There just was kind of like, the amount that was able to be accrued that had to be paid out was really exorbitant. So I think...
That's in your employee handbook.
It is. So that's where...
So that's the tricky part.
Yeah.
Is with the staff, and this happened in, I think, almost every department, maybe not library. With a staff this small and the amount of work to do, the department heads rarely can take all the vacation they accrue and keep things rolling. So you end up either... Which we have... We've done, I think, two times in the history that I remember. We paid out vacation because we knew that person was going to lose 80 hours. There was no way we were able to let them take it, and that's not really legit, right? To just be like, oh, too bad. You're... I mean... So that's kind of one of the issues with if we were going to try and lower that rollover because, like me and chief at the time, and Jeff, although we've been better at getting Jeff to take it because now he has a full crew. There's some years you just can't even possibly take it all.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to take one Friday every... Right?
More than that.
That's not realistic, probably.
Right. Depending on your years of service, in the handbook, you accrue a lot more hours, so as you're here.
Right now, I'm going to be at 32 and a half days of vacation a year.
Yeah.
Workdays. I don't know how you do that.
Yeah.
That's...
Well, I don't know.
Well, we had... It's too full of my home. It's a month and a half of time. You just can't. You have work to do. That's the crux, right? It's you're like, hmm, do I just go sit at home and take this vacation day when I know all these things need doing? You don't.
No, you don't.
If you're a good employee, you don't. It's hard to force yourself to stay out. So the other thing that I noticed in this one... So the termination section on page seven is... Well, it's nothing like mine. Where mine lays out, if we terminate you with cause, this is what happens. If we terminate you without cause, like for no reason, buh-bye, we don't want you here anymore, this is what happens. And only in that second one are you required to actually pay the severance, right? They could still go back into the... Step back into the sergeant, should the sergeants... I think you beef up the language about sergeant. One, if you were medically unable to do the job, you can't hold that. And two, I just lost.
Well, it says you can't go back to sergeant if you're... Because if you're being demoted, like, for cause.
Well, no, I know that... Oh, the other one was, you couldn't go back to sergeant if the sergeant position is already filled. That would be the other thing. Then what are you doing? You got two sergeants. And we only have one in our current. So you could beef it up like that and beef up the kind of scenarios. If it's, you know, expand on the, you can't go back to sergeant if it's with cause, but what happens if it's not for cause?
So add to the last bit of that, unless termination is for cause. Add to that, you mean, Josette?
Well, no, because it says, unless terminated... Second paragraph, the last line. It said you can have the right, unless terminated for cause. I would add the... I would clean it up and do headings where it says, you know, you can go back into the sergeant's position, termination for cause, termination with no cause, without cause, and do three paragraphs that really clearly outline it.
Could add to it then.
Yeah.
And add in that medical clause.
Yeah. In the sergeant's.
That's going to be interesting because of ADA. And I'm sure Ruben will do it properly. I mean, that's just something that's really... We'll just have to...
Well, I think you just say, because they have to hit... I mean, all of us, you think it's even in the employment handbook. If you cannot perform the duties, right, then there are steps that we have to take. So if we have to draw some of that in there to safeguard that, if you're unable to perform the duties, then the policy in the handbook regarding this and how we will try and make accommodations because we've had that, where people have had, you know, periods in their lives medically where they're unable to lift the 50 pounds, right, from injury or something, and then once they're better, so you just make accommodations.
Yeah.
So they're...
Especially, well, that's the thing, though. In the state of Oregon, it can go on for years without us being able to not...
Public sector's that way.
No, it's not. Public is a whole different collection of...
I know, I mean, you've had... There was a certain expectation that you would be released by your doctor within a certain amount of time. And if you weren't able, they wouldn't hold the job for you.
And so with being public, you're falling under FEMLA, OFLA, all of the requirements where you can't really... I mean, we can't even ask, you know, other than if it's workman's comp, we get to know what the injury is. But we... Should someone get injured on their side and they need to go out on leave, we don't really get any information other than here's their job description and the duty list, and then the doctor checks what they can or can't do and time, timing periods, and then we have to send another letter, please let us know or have your doctor fill out this updated form. And it's like, that's just legally what you're kind of stuck.
Can't there anything that's secondary? Okay, I'm sorry.
So if they can't fully perform their job, but they can do administrative duties... But administrative duties aren't full-time work. Do we do any part-time?
I haven't seen that, especially because they're employed as a full-time. So most of the time, they'd be like, they could do part-time, and then if they had like supplemental insurance or if they had disability coverage under AFLAC or something like that, that supplements you get kind of... It's scenario by scenario, right? Depending on exactly what their availability is.
I was just wondering if Ruben could carve something in there since your job duties are restricted. If you're... If they go on this medical thing... Because there's another thing I want to talk about is, you know... I can't tell you what... How many hours administratively they need to be in that office, but my impression was I got abused at the end with our last chief. That's basically where he stayed. And we lost. I don't believe that it is a full-time job, being a police chief in there. You know, I think it should be like a 50-50 split.
Yeah, I think just depending on reports that are generated and stuff, I think it will flux all year long. I don't know of a way to actually outline that in an agreement because it will. Some days, some months, it's probably 70%, 30%, right? And some months it flips. If you have a whole bunch of cases and vandalism and reporting and all of that stuff, I mean, the amount of uploading they have to do to the CGIS and all the stuff is like annoying to me. I wouldn't be able to do it. But I don't know how you write that in.
Yeah, I don't. I don't want to interrupt you in the system, but I think you're right.
I mean, so what do you want? Best case scenario, what you want, would want it to say? What do you... Just spell it for me, because I maybe am not understanding.
Well, the expectation is the chief is a working chief. It's a working position. Patrol presence on the street is a job required.
Yeah.
Sitting in the office all day is not fulfilling that duty.
Well, what happens with the work that they have to do is sitting in the office all day?
It's a lot of work.
Well, but what's he been doing now? I mean, is the work not being done?
No, the work's still being done.
Because he's been out on the streets.
Well, yeah, I guess that's the thing. I guess... I don't know how... I don't... I don't know what you know that you're feeling that way. I didn't feel that way about the past chief. Like, because you didn't see the car out or... Does that make sense? Like, what's making the...
Yeah, I just... I barely ever saw him see Chief Connor on the street, terrified the last... Well, that last year was...
But what do you mean on the street? Like the car out in public?
Out in public, patrol and, you know, serving that function of a police officer presence on the street.
I think, may I...
Yes, absolutely.
I think that in the job description, it just defines that the expectation is that it's a working chief of police when able. And, you know, depending on what the duties are that would keep him desk-bound or her desk-bound. I think that that's the only way you can do it because you cannot mandate you will spend 48% of your time on the street because that's just not within the purview of, I think, whether it's the city administrator's, the boss, or the councilor's boss. I think it's just the expectation. Like you said, you're a working chief, but we also have to give them latitude to be able to manage their own job.
Well, and they really are a department head, so you don't see me out on the street. I mean, you do sometimes, but the same kind of thing. They have to do evaluations, employment, all those things.
It's a very small department.
But that doesn't mean the amount of work generated by those officers or the report because they have to review the reports of their officers and send those in. So there's a lot of like paperwork stuff, I think, we don't attribute to police work. We attribute police work to boots on the ground, arrests made, calls answered. Does that make sense? And you're kind of... The paperwork side, I think you're discounting that a little bit when it's the federal requirement. That's what everyone else cares about. We care about seeing them out and about, but what all the other agencies and state police and all those people care about is how you're tracking and managing the records of these interactions with criminals or trespass. Does that make sense? So I don't know how you would satisfy kind of your concern other than being really, you know, we expect to see the chief of police engaging with the public and, you know, whatever the things are you want, putting that on paper. I think you'd have to do that if... Because it'd be a bummer to not put it on paper and then they get in trouble not knowing that's your expectation. Or, right, you don't like what they're doing. But they didn't have written kind of understanding of it.
Josette?
Yeah.
Kind of along the lines of Dale's thinking as far as duties and... Whenever I think of an injury in my past with my employer, and this may or may not be warranted with the profession of serving as a police officer. You may have to have 100% of your faculties and physical abilities, but the light duty end of it, is there anything that possibly a chief out of the union could perform light duties if he's on a workman's comp?
So then they could do administrative tasks.
Yeah.
Right? But that's also kind of the bummer is if they're here in the office and a call comes in and they're stuck doing administrative tasks, we would say, you can't go. That's what we, as the city, would say, right? Because they'd be hindered somehow. They would want to go.
Yeah.
And so it's like kind of, police is weird, different. You know, the rest of us, if I don't... If I'm not available, that's fine. And Stephanie, Cassandra, they can say, they can deal with someone. They can take a message. They can make a decision, and then we discuss it later. If they have to make a decision on the spot about something, they know they're... I trust them to do that. But in a way, police is just different.
Yeah. It was just a kind of a long shot thing.
That when we had two out, right, in that department, that was a huge burden because we couldn't... We're still having to pay those people. We're still having to do all the paperwork. And then we have this... The other ones getting kind of burnt out, being the only one. So police is just a weird... It's a weird department for this kind of stuff. It's just based on the scenario.
Go ahead.
No, 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 you're first. I already talked.
I think what Dale's kind of seeing is with Karnikin, he's out there. We see him more. It's more of what he expected our other chief to be doing. And he would like the next person to be the same way. And I would too.
So I think we just get that in, the expectations in the job description upfront. In this agreement, if you choose to go with an employment agreement, really spell it out under the duty section.
Yeah, the expectation that it's a working position.
Yeah.
Because if they do retract in there and just hibernate...
Yeah.
I don't know if you could use that as cause, but it's not acceptable, though, for us to just basically lose that police presence on the street.
Yeah, I think...
And paying the top dollar for that position to just be nothing but an administrator. We're just too small, the department, to absorb that.
Yeah.
I mean, because, I mean, just think of right now, when the city... If we were to have a chief put in there...
But for the most part, Dale, that's the tricky part is all of them are coming from a place when they come to get employed. A chief is the administrative job. That is the administrative position. Like, they're tasked with all of it. Time sheets, by-waitings, reporter.
Before.
Well, no, I think, but I think anyone we get, say we post it, right? When we had Frank Grace, he wasn't out on the street, right? We've... Most of the chiefs we've had burned out on the street. So I think that might also just be a description, understanding from that profession too, that that's administrative. Most police chiefs aren't, you know... I think if they just went out the back door by the gates when the wind sucks.
We could probably add that verbiage in the contract in the handbook.
Yeah, I think, you know, you could put something like, we're wanting it to be a working chief, engaging regularly with the community that's, you know, participating in patrols when available, like... And so then if we saw none happening, we'd say, okay, you're not available. Show me why that is, why you're not, right?
Now, the last year, sergeant has been sitting up there at the school in the church parking lot every morning.
Yeah.
Hmm, about once a month.
Oh.
Well, when our...
Maybe lately, but he's up there a lot.
Our concerns was we are so remote. So we made that executive decision to have him work the hours of school so that we always had presence until we're fully... Because to us, that's the most important thing. You know, if petty thefts are happening, the little gap when we don't have coverage, okay. Most of us have... Have bring cams or protecting ourselves or whatever.
The one thing, Dale, all of you, I know you understand paperwork load. It doesn't really matter how big or small your organization or your department is. There's a, as Josette's kind of alluded to, there is a level of paperwork that's required that is ridiculous. I mean, a file, and I know particularly with police work, anytime there's something that's a crime, if they don't do it exactly right, that means that person potentially can not be held liable for whatever crimes they committed. So it's not just about, oh, look, we took a report. I wish it was like the old whichever days.
Right.
The old shows where it's like, oh, yeah, here's my report, you know, just passing it in. But it's not. I mean, the level of any scrutiny on all of that stuff is outrageous. And the amount of time I spend doing paperwork is... It's mind-boggling and it's numbing. They'd rather be out on the street than sitting, well, some of them anyway.
Well, it's hilarious. So we were driving in the Halem Highway, and we got across from Elm, and Jasper was a little kid in his booster seat, and he goes, "I just saw a car in the river. I saw a car in the river." And we're like, okay, buddy. We turn around, and there's a frickin' car down the river. So we come to the police department, and we tell Sean. And Sean's like, thanks for the paperwork eagle eyes to Jasper because he's got to now pull it out, investigate it, look for stuff, right? All of that up over a car someone was driving drunk, went into embankment, jumped out of the car. Well, there was alcohol in the car, open bottles. They bailed. Now we have this report about a random car, right? So that's the kind of thing where... And then the chief's really supposed to take in those reports, make sure all the Ts are crossed. and then the chief's really supposed to take in those reports, make sure all the Ts are crossed.
Yeah.
You know, Is are dotted, and then submit it to the bigger thing, so there is maybe in this last instance, he, he, I, what I honestly believe is he was dealing with the medical thing way before he informed us of it. And so I think he was coming every day, trying to do the job, but really suffering from it and trying to like ignore, right? And so then that has you kind of hold up and you're trying to be there present and do the stuff you know you need to do, but you're not physically. And I think that was him safeguarding himself and the city from having to pursue somebody, right, he should have been more forthright and said, I'm hurting, but having to pursue somebody without or knowing in the back of your mind, I'm not 100%. And I'm going to risk me and potentially the city or whoever I'm dealing with, if I go for it, but. But I'm, yeah, so we wanted to say, well, first of all, the job description definitely needs to say our expectations, so. And we're just coming to consensus, I'm going to bring you guys back first, so. And I can listen to the tape too, but we want it's a working, because it's a working chief position. We want engagement, regular engagement with the citizens via patrol, right? You can spout off anything to me and I'm writing it down.
So is the employment agreement where there's the potential for adding the residence?
It is. Classicized, hasn't been there. Yeah, great, someone Greg sent us. Uh, I don't know.
requirements or?
No.
Yeah, just a bump in pay if you live locally.
Yeah, and that's, but that's in the, that's such a CBA, so we'd have to put it in here if you want it in there. It's only currently offered to people in the union. I mean, CBA. Because so when they come out of the union.
That's a cost.
They don't pay. That's why, if, if you didn't have a contract, you couldn't offer that to them. Because you don't offer it to any of the employees under me, right? They're the same as that, without an employment agreement.
Right.
So is that something you guys want to?
It was just a, well, the amount of money that we would save because they weren't taking the vehicle out of town. Probably.
Yeah, potentially, depending on which step they are. Because 5% bump, if they're a step six or higher up step, that's a chunk, 5% of that's a chunk of change. You know, just every year as they, because they go up the same steps as if they were in the union, based on where they came in. That's the, that's how you regulate their pay. And that's what the agreement had stated for compensation, but.
And that's presuming we go with the employment agreement and not have them be a employee of the city.
Yeah.
Well, this does specify they have to be, they have to maintain residency within five miles.
Well, that's classicalized.
That's obviously too close for us, but.
Yeah, I think our CBA says they have to be able to report to their duty statement within so many minutes.
Okay, to prevent previous.
The bummer part of that is someone's driving where they can get in 20 minutes, you don't want.
So that was in our previous agreement?
I think it's in the CBA, the collective bargaining.
Okay. But, so that wasn't, we don't think, in the previous, because obviously he was.
Well, this is the previous agreement.
For the chief.
That's right, I was looking at.
I just redacted the personal stuff.
I forgot about this one. Okay.
So they abide by all the things, because they're not in the union, in the employee handbook. That's why, if you were going to offer them what's offered to regular patrol, meaning the 5% for living in the it would have to be in here, because right now, all this says is they're the same as all the employees under me.
Yeah.
Which don't get offered anything.
So, and I think there's a lot of good stuff in here, like, and I think that's one of them, but I also think there are limits to the payouts for resignations and terminations.
Well, that's in classicalized.
I know.
Yeah, so if you, if you want to.
I like it.
Put a section.
It says that, um, like severance wouldn't exceed 200 hours. Vacation time will not exceed 200 hours, these are payouts.
So ours would be the 260, because it would match the handbook.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
And then, um, sick time was not paid out.
No, it's never paid out.
Okay.
It's just reported to hers.
And it was vacation that got us this time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that was limited to 260?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was still.
Yeah.
It's a chunk of change.
Yeah.
Yep.
Classicized, went to 200.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, well, and that's in whatever year, two. That's 21 years ago. And then the, while I appreciate the severance, or, or the not to exceed the 200 hours, or the risk is, well, no, the risk of doing something different than the handbook is that if, if we had to fight it, then they're probably fighting it. And then you're spending money on attorneys, like that's, you want to have it be an agreement that gets you what you want. Doesn't totally write off the person applying, but then leaves you very few spots where legally you're stuck.
So maybe it's not a discussion for this agreement, maybe it's a discussion of handbook, but.
The handbook, I'm lowering it. I'm lowering it to 200.
Because is it limited right now?
To 260.
Okay.
Or, whatever, it's, I think it's, or it used to be 260, it's 280, because that's so many weeks of time or something. It's in there, what does it say?
That, is that for both?
That's very generous, either number.
And is that?
What are you describing?
Nonprofit, 160. Carryover 160.
And what is that in, so that's four weeks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, 4812, yeah, 412, yeah. I can add.
Yes. I'm like, what?
Is it limited in the handbook, both for severance and vacation payout?
There's no severance in the handbook, because they're out well.
Okay.
If we let you go, the only thing you can do is grieve. If I let you go, you can grieve it to you guys. And if you guys uphold the decision, then the only thing they can do is try and sue us. But most of the time, when we've had to let them go, we've had the evidence to let them go, right? I mean, we, they weren't going to sue us for.
Let me see, yeah. I don't think 160 hours is unreasonable, but in this case, I think it is more appropriate to be the 200 or something. To be what, 1500? What'd you just say?
200 or 260.
Oh, 200 or whatever.
Higher.
It is.
1500.
Even a higher amount.
Yeah, like, my dad had something like this when he retired. Okay, so yeah, it's not more than two hours.
No severance.
How much? Not more than 280 hours can accrue. But the reason I think that is, is if you've worked here for 15 years or more, you're getting 200 hours a year.
Yeah.
I mean, it starts with 80, so 10 days of vacation. That's for the first through year one to year four. Year five to seven is 15 days of vacation. Years eight through 14 is 20 days or 160 hours, and years 15 or more is 25 days.
Or 10 days of vacation.
In the classicalized, the 200 hours, they top out at 17 years, I believe.
Say that again, Rick.
I thought I saw 17. Range 17, I, I'm assuming that's a year. Years, 17 years of service.
261. Starting, yeah, we top out at 261 now.
Well, I'm sorry, the 5% step increase.
28.
Anyway, it tops out at 17 years, I think.
Or section 17 or something.
Oh, actually, there's one more.
Related, is there steps in there?
Oh, range 17.
Yes. Which I think is something related to years, Rick.
Okay.
Exactly year for year, but that's.
They could just pay me for a week or something.
We've been along. We've been on two vacations, one, two, three, one, two weeks.
It's a time off.
At the mill?
It's been an interesting, Kat has just revised theirs to be more competitive with the real world. 15 years, we had to go 10 years between year five and year 15, before we got an increase in our monthly personal leave hours. Still, I cannot complain, Kat has some pretty good benefits for a nonprofit. Particularly, but I, as it applies to this, I think that, sorry. I think this is appropriate. I still, is there a benefit to, or is there a drawback to having them have an employment contract with the city versus not being a, being a city employee versus being contracted?
In the bargaining unit, I mean?
No.
Okay.
Is there a benefit?
Yeah, I mean.
Most of the city.
Because you're saying that.
No, there's not a benefit for the, for the contract conversion, that's a benefit to them, safety net.
Right.
Right, feeling like I have something, I'm not just coming in willy nilly, right? Yeah.
So, basically what would happen is the terms that are currently in the employment agreement would be rolled into the handbook as a section of any, of anything we wanted specifically to be addressed. That, that would be of benefit to the new chief. An expert.
It would just be another agreement like this.
Okay.
Yeah. You could pull things you want that aren't. They're going to have to abide by this handbook anyway, right? So the only thing is, if you wanted the 5% incentive, that would have to go in there, because it only exists in the CBA, which they're not a part of. If I'm making sense. So one of the things I just read, I guess misunderstood. Trying to read this termination section here.
In our, is that?
Yeah, in the handbook here.
Oh, so handbook, not in this. That's interesting what happens when you actually read, reread your old guidelines and program guidelines and employ me handbooks and.
So one of the things I have to ask Ruben, because the way this sentence reads, let me read it to you. Find it again. It's 11. So this concerns me now that I'm reading it separate from everything, and just reading it on its own. So it said, upon separation from the city, employees will be paid for any accrued but unused vacation. Vacation must schedule, supervisor time off granted, but it doesn't say if you're fired for cause that you shouldn't, you don't get it, so it may say that you have to give it up.
Yeah, and classicalized.
Yeah.
With cause still paid out.
Correct.
Defamation.
Just the vacation.
It is, yes.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So. So that's fine, upon separation.
So, so what caused those banks when this happens is it impacts our budget to do the, these things. Is there a way fiscally for, I mean, if somebody earns a vacation, shouldn't we have that money sitting there to pay that? And so, just because we didn't pay it out, it should be sitting somewhere. So when, if they pull the pin and we have to pay it, we can go, yeah, we got it, it doesn't impact our budget. I mean, that's kind of caught us in the past, I think we haven't had the money there.
Well, and.
We're using our.
By that same token, we've never set aside the severance required. When, in my agreement and this agreement, when Bill was here and we had to pay out, his was six months of severance. We did not have, for six months, we could not afford to hire anyone.
It's almost like.
The money had to be paid.
Reserve somewhere to be able to pay this out when it happens, because that really constricts our ability to, you know, well, we can't hire anybody, because we don't have any money in the budget.
Right.
To, you know, so we limp.
Right.
For a year.
I thought that was your, I agree with that.
Not for cities now. Really interesting.
Because I was thinking, maybe instead of like, being able to accrue so much, maybe you hit either a timeline for how old those hours are, that you just have to pay them out, just on an annual basis. So you're paying it in chunks, instead of waiting, 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 bam.
But it's only, I'm going to say this, only 280, right? And that's a, that's a finite number, it's not like.
Yeah, but it's not.
They're getting 1500, no.
We haven't been able, I mean, we weren't able to hire a chief or another officer because of this.
Yeah, but I think.
The other thing is it is impeding us, when we have to pay it, from replacing that person. So there's going to be a gap, and that's concerning.
Yeah, so I think that'd be a budgetary, starting something and figuring out how we start paying into this.
But don't we figure, when we figure their police budget, we look at the potential for them taking all their vacation in that year?
But if they're taking the vacation, then they're getting paid for it, then they're not also working and getting paid for it.
Yeah.
See what I mean?
So the.
Yeah, yeah.
We're not, we're not going, you're 20, 80 hours plus 15 days in the budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. We're not doing that currently. We, it's not a bad idea to do it. But then I don't know.
Meaning, exactly, bookkeeping is a problem.
Well, and it's hypothetical, because if someone is taking that time, then you're not going to pay it twice.
Yeah.
So it's only, it's not something you're going to be able to perfectly predict.
What, what we're really doing is, is where people are working when they should have been on vacation, we would have been paying them that vacation pay.
Right, they're, like with the police.
Fiscarily, we're really not anticipating that.
Right, and if you have.
They're working when we've.
Right.
And so.
Yeah. And if you had a fully staffed police department, then vacations aren't a problem necessarily, right? That's the other thing, you get down to two guys, they're working every shift, sorry, no one's getting vacation.
Yeah.
And that's the times we've had to pay it out, because we're like, hey.
What I, so I only get three days, but at the end of the year, well, because you get a lot of other days, they're just not paid. But at the end of the year, if you don't take them, they are paid out. Roll those over, you roll over your sick time, but you don't roll over any personal days, because clearly they're, are planning to pay that, right? Because, well, and also because if I'm not sick, they're paying a sub. But you don't.
And we, but, could we do that, but we'd have the budget for that.
You'd have the budget for it.
Going to be taken.
They would keep you more current, instead of waiting until.
Yeah, then, I mean, so you're paying it as you go, or you build the reserve that you're holding it in to pay it out.
Right.
And like to the seventh point, that.
Yeah, I don't know.
Need to have a little cushion there somewhere.
Yeah, I think preparing for severance and vacation you can't allow someone to take is a smart idea in the budget. The concern about, I have about change in the handbook or lessening the hours, then really the longevity benefit of being here is nothing, because you get nothing more than someone that started yesterday.
Yeah.
And that's not going to make for good vibes if you start, and I think we only have well, I'd have to look, but I think only one is currently in that. And the rest of us are in the lesser ones, the two, the eight to fourteen is where Sean and I are, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I guess that's, we need to put a placeholder for thinking about the budget next year, incorporating something in there.
Well, and I, I think it just being salaries, and then it would be in the chart of accounts as, you know, it's earned vacation, it's a line item.
Yeah.
No.
Also severance.
But I'm talking about for severance, for the, for the.
Sure.
Bulk of them, say someone leaves us tomorrow, we're happy to pay that, so we should be planning for kind of collecting at least what exists on the books and hours.
Yeah, yeah, really, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm saying, so, and then every year, whatever can be accrued should be in salaries. You know, covered, okay.
But there is a maximum, it's gonna ever get, well, a technical maximum, because you've got two hundred and eighty hours times whatever the rate is maximum.
Yeah.
Per employee.
Per employee, right.
Right.
Right. Because we had talked about this probably, maybe it was the first time you were on, maybe it was with Donna, but we had talked about going to PTO way back.
Yeah.
But then the money number was shocking, the amount of money we'd need to hold to go out. It's a lot.
Well, I think realistically, I mean, because I, I assume staff, a lot of staff are able to take their, their vacations.
Yes.
So I mean, I'd probably have Angie take a realistic look at what is actually occurring and try to model around that.
Yeah. And I think where you, where the heaviest balances have historically been held, except maybe way back with a couple of public works guys, but I knew they were collecting it for knee replacement or something. Right, for downtime, to still be taking in funds, it's usually the department heads.
Yeah.
Well, usually it's city, police, public works, library, who would have been able to make that work? Typically, your ones that are carrying the heaviest balance.
So is there anything else we need to add to the wishlist?
Yeah, the agreement you wanted, we wanna, let me just go over what I have for you guys. So we're gonna put in the job description and in the agreement, this is a working position under duties, a regular engagement with citizens via patrol. When a bit, when, what was I saying?
Terminal hours, yeah.
Okay. Do you wanna put in the five percent incentive? Into this agreement, collectively?
With the, I don't know. Okay, this, I'm gonna say something that's not allowed, I don't know how long Sean is planning on sticking out, if Sean wants to become chief of police. Yeah. But if you have a new chief of police.
Yeah.
And they start soon, or at whatever point, they're gonna start at the lower end of that.
It depends on if they're lateral, they're gonna come in at whatever step they come in at.
Never mind then, that does not.
That's why we were doing work for patrol under the CBA, because that's the positions we typically lack, is the, the step one, step two, step three patrolman.
I think there is a value of having somebody close.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I, I knew that value back when I was a reserve, having reserves and, and phone call away of having a body show up.
Exactly.
Versus twenty to thirty minutes to get here.
Well, it's twofold, it's a value to us, and it also is impactful on them.
Yes.
Living here and dealing with that in their, all their hours that they aren't technically working, so.
Well.
It's an incentive, but it's also a. Right, and he had reasons for moving, so that's what I'm saying, on one side, it's an incentive, on the other side, it's a not quite, but almost a compensation, and I'm sorry.
Sorry, people are gonna come interrupt your dinner.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna call you when the breaker pops.
Yeah.
Incentive, even though it may cost us a fair amount of money.
Okay.
But that's just.
But, but to your point, though, there is a cost of taking that vehicle very far out.
Yeah. It's gonna kind of.
To me, it's close to four grand a year to drive back and forth to the mill.
Yeah.
And for them, it'd be even more, because they're working five days a week.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Or well, depending on their shift.
Yeah.
I mean, I was only working, well, technically supposed to only be working four, but usually it's like six.
Yeah, but, I mean, with gas particularly, that will.
Yeah.
And the new vehicle is not extremely.
Well, and the wear and tear, I mean, we're just talking gas, not the wear and tear on the equipment.
Exactly.
They probably double it.
That's why it's now sixty-eight cents or sixty-eight and a half cents, the government says.
I think the.
Yeah.
A lot of work. I'm not sure that incorporates the actual cost of gas.
So I was just reading this again and thinking, what really hit us was hers allows you to collect up to two thousand hours of sick time. And if someone has a medical, major medical thing, they could, basically, you would pay them for nearly a year, two weeks short of a year, should they have never used that sick time, look, I mean, currently, just in reviewing it every time I sign checks in that, that report, we don't have anyone that's got that collective, but you get to the ten plus years. And if there's someone that's been relatively healthy, they have a chunk of hours in that sick time, while we don't have to pay it out. Should they have a medical thing, we can't not let them take it all, right, over, so that's also a thing that we can't, it's just part of doing business, but.
No, there was something, though, we were talking about, Ruben looking at, going around the medical, right?
Yeah, the, my, just adding medical guidelines for termination or, that they have to be able to.
Perform.
Perform their duties.
They have to be able to.
Right.
In the termination, yeah.
Yeah.
Section, yeah.
And the sergeant.
Yeah.
It's a motion.
Right, unless it's already filled, you can't go back and stuff.
Okay.
Mine too.
Over the top. Okay, and so we wanted kind of more akin to how mine separates if it's for cause without cause, more details. The five percent incentive, there's contention for that, if you go back into the union sergeant, it can't be with a medical issue, can't be, it has to be for security of your job placement, not because, you know, if you're, I think, what did we call it, a medical separation, if this is a medical separation, that can't be used, or something like that.
Because if you can't medically be the chief, you can't be.
Yeah, more so, yeah.
You know?
I mean, there's a little bit about, a little bit honest about, I mean, medically can't do your job, even like at the mill, and when it came to that time, if you medically couldn't perform your duties, they didn't have to hold you up for it, I mean, you know, and of course, you're working under the federal rules.
Yeah, and that's like, you mean, they, they offered femla, but then if you ran out of femla in the twelve weeks.
Yeah.
You could be let out.
Yeah, they didn't have to hold your position after that, they have the option to, but.
Yeah.
Didn't have to.
Yeah. I think weirdly.
You're probably different.
Like, I think weirdly, people, maybe the private industry just, people aren't gonna sue, because, like, but for the public, I feel like every chance somebody gets for being slight, they think the city has deep pockets or, you know, but I think that's just kind of a problem of doing business somewhat, is that, you know, people will kind of be like, nope, I didn't do this, or I, yeah.
But, you know, I mean, like I said, it kind of comes back to being kind of honest about the situation, though, I mean, if I can't do the work that is required of me to do it, I, how can I hold you hostage?
Right.
For my job? Maybe the courts view that differently, but.
Makes sense, but if you suddenly are the person in that position and you don't have a career path anymore.
But is that?
I'm not saying it, I'm not saying it's justified, I'm just saying I I could see how someone in that position would be like, oh no, I need to get what I can to protect myself, my family.
And sometimes it's generational.
Yeah.
Just saying. But I, when I could work because of my back, I still worked. Had part-time, the temporary disability and part-time.
Yeah.
You know, I was working as much as I could, even though I shouldn't have been, but it, it's, it's that investment that, that some people have, some generations have more than other generations, and I'm sorry to say that, but it's, oh god, I'm sounding old. I'm one of those people that, but, or, and, and just people, there are people who are and people who aren't, and and you're right, I mean, it'd be great if everybody was just as much as, you know, they could be honest about it, and, oh, well, this has happened, I did something dumb, and now I'm injured, and now I can't do my job, so I'm just gonna leave. But I'll see your point of, oh my goodness, I was injured. I can't do my job, what am I gonna do, how do I get money? So.
Yeah.
It's all of the above.
So, sorry, do you guys want me to run down what I have that we're going to amend? So that we're putting in the job description and this agreement, that the position we're offering is for a working chief, regularly engaged, engagement with citizens, regular engagement with citizens via patrol and allows. For the termination section, we're gonna beef it up and put that with cause without cause. In that section of the stepping back, the same termination section, stepping back into sergeant, we need some outline, some expectations that that's not allowed if it's for medical reasons, that you can't perform your duties.
Or if it's.
The expectations are part, if you're medically unable to perform your duties, that you would come in and do administrative duties part-time versus whatever medical restrictions are in place. What else, anything else?
About if the sergeant position is al- already filled.
Oh, okay.
Already.
And then the five percent.
Okay, so I can have.
Think in the private sector, some, um, I don't know if you can do this in public. On the medical thing, a lot of times they refer you to a doctor, another doctor to get the opinion.
We have, we have that, we have that. That's in the CBA, can pull that out, because we can ask them to go reviewed by.
Because didn't we kind of run into that? That we couldn't really go.
Well, you can have questions, you can ask them to go for medical review and then you, yeah.
Whether they can perform their job, because it isn't. They have to be able to perform their job.
And you could get, you know, unfortunately nowadays, you could get a doctor to probably sign anything for somebody, if you had the right or wrong doctor.
Seems like, yeah.
Right? But.
But the doctors are choosing.
Yeah. We'll just pull that out of the CBA, that with medical review, that we, we can insist on that, should we think something's up.
Yeah.
Is what it says, but not that way.
I mean, we're all dancing around that issue because.
Yeah.
Kind of, it did burn us, and.
You can't, you can't demand they see a doctor of the city's choosing, except for the evaluation, they can go to any doctor they want.
Yeah, yeah, you can say, we're requiring the medical evaluation.
Yeah.
For this section of the clause, here you go, take these papers, or we'll email the papers, or.
Do we don't run into that ever?
No.
Nice.
Well, yeah, and I think for, you know, especially in that department, you're gonna, if it's, if it's workman's comp, we're on the hook, right, if something happened on the job, we're just paying it.
Yeah.
That's the risk we take with having.
An employee, that's part of it.
Yeah. So that kind of thing, should it be not a workman's comp claim, we, you know, can push a little bit harder, okay? So then we'll just, I'll follow up with you guys once Ruben gets a new version. Okay. You're welcome. Anything else?
Can you turn down the noise a bit? I know, two days, two days, I can't complain.
Oh my god, it's wonderful. Don't complain.
Just thankful it's not.
Did you adjourn?
Yes.
I'll adjourn this work session at seven thirty-five PM.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very much, I am just thankful that.